Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 12th, 2021 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any needed changes?
No recommended changes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Tom. Second by Lindsey. All in favor? That's unanimous. First up, presentation and discussion is New Hope Elementary School with Laura Webb.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. I would like to start by first thanking all the members of the school board and Dr. Bearden for giving me this opportunity to open New Hope Elementary and to build this new school community. I am honored and thrilled to have this experience. It has been an incredible journey so far, and I can't wait for the coming months until we open in August of 2022. So thank you for having me here tonight to share more with you about New Hope. As most of you know, the history behind the naming of New Hope Elementary School is extraordinary. As you can see, Forsyth County schools dates back to 1873, and as historical research shows us, in the early 1900s, there were approximately 16 African-American schools here in Forsyth County. One of those schools, the largest of those schools, being named New Hope. New Hope is said to have rested on land that was donated by Mr. Roper, who was at the time one of the largest African-American landowners here in Forsyth County. Not only does New Hope have a historical importance for our community, but New Hope also represents positive growth and vision moving forward. We all know that in our history and even in recent years, we have been faced with many challenges that have weighed us down. But with hope, we envision and imagine a brighter future, a brighter future for everybody. I personally cannot think of a better name for this new elementary school for Forsyth County. As you've probably seen, we are the New Hope Nighthawks. I have to pause and give a shout out to Heath Bieferman, who is the artistic genius behind the mascots that you will see in the logos throughout this presentation. He was incredible to work with. He started with very basic visionary ideas that I presented, and he turned it into these masterful art pieces that you will see. When you hear New Hope Nighthawks, of course, for those of us in the elementary world, we love when the name of our school and our mascot flow so smoothly together and have alliteration, but more importantly, when you hear a New Hope and a nighthawk, we want to emphasize the importance, the historical importance, but also what we want our students to represent. Nighthawks are known for being very adaptable and very resilient, very determined. Over the past 50 years, the population of a nighthawk has decreased, which is why conservation experts have really worked diligently to preserve the habitat and the environments for our nighthawks. This mirrors the effort that is being made to honor and preserve the history of our African-American community here in Forsyth County. For those of you that are not bird experts, you may or may not know that a nighthawk is actually a very small bird. That's actually usually underestimated, but when in large flocks, they form a spectacular sight, just like we envision our elementary students do. I have no doubt that the students of New Hope Elementary will flock together, that they will adapt, and they will excel, just like a nighthawk. I'd like to now give you some general information about the school, about the design and of the building. New Hope Elementary will be the 23rd elementary school here in Forsyth County. It sits on just over 40 acres on the west side of Castleberry Road. As you can see, it is a large building that has a population of about 1,175 students. We will, of course, start smaller than that to provide some room for growth in the coming years, and we will join the majority of our neighboring elementary schools as an early-start school. One of the questions I get most often when people see or find out where New Hope is is, why right down the road from another elementary school? And the reason is, we all know that Forsyth County schools is growing rapidly, which means some of our schools need some relief, and New Hope is designed and is built to relieve four of our neighboring elementary schools, to include Vickery Creek Elementary, Midway Elementary, Whitlow, and Shiloh Point Elementary School. We are projected to open in the fall with students in kindergarten through 5th grade with approximately 900 students, give or take. Of course, we have to really see how the redistricting lines are presented and how they are finalized. The building itself. One very unique characteristic of New Hope is that this is a brand-new design. This elementary school design has never been built here before in Forsyth County. I would be remiss if I didn't pause to thank Smallwood Architectural Firm that has designed this incredible building and Bowen &amp; Watson Construction for bringing those designs to reality. I know this is the first time that Bowen &amp; Watson has built a school here in Forsyth County, and I can only speak to my experience, but they have been incredible to work with to date. They reach out and schedule monthly tours where I get to go, boots and hard hat and all, and we get to tour the building and tour the property, where I really get to be involved in the day-to-day, step-by-step build of this school and really be a part of seeing these blueprints come to life. So what you see here in front of you are three aerial photos that first just show what a magnificent property that this school is built on, but also to show over the past several months just the scope and the magnitude of work that has been done. The picture on the left dating back to mid-January of 2021, the middle is in mid-June, and then the far right is in the middle of September, just last month. So this really gives you a great view of just how much work has been done on this property. Now, I apologize, this next slide was not in the presentation that I shared with Sandy yesterday, and I will certainly send her an updated version. I received this photo last night, and I really decided at the last minute that I wanted to include it. This picture was taken about 10 days ago, so again, just to show you what an incredible building we have, but also to give thanks of the work of not only our construction team that is keeping up to date with our timelines, but also to our own Forsyth County Facilities Department. Mr. Wark, Mr. Pruitt, Mr. Weening have done a phenomenal job of making sure that this building is on target and maybe even slightly ahead of schedule on days. I hope Mr. Wark doesn't come up and say any different, but certainly we are trending in the right direction. We all know that right now, when you're thinking about building supplies, that's a hard thing to be working through right now, so staying on track is very important. So kudos and shout-outs to them for this phenomenal building. As you see here, there are a few pictures that just show examples of just the pure beauty of the interior of this school. You can see that our building colors are going to be shades of blues and shades of greens and natural tones. I absolutely adore the colors. I think they go very well with the layout of the school and also fit perfectly with our nighthawk mascot. For those of you that are unfamiliar, as I mentioned, this design is unlike any other. So when you walk in the main door, you come to a one-story area where more of your common spaces are going to be located. You're going to have your office area, your clinic, your cafeteria, your gym, your art room, your music room, and we even have a wing for students that are in our specially-designed instruction program. Once you get past these common areas, you do come to the media center, which kind of acts as the barrier between the common areas and the classroom wing. The classroom wing does drop down into a two-story building, kind of in a rectangular shape, which surrounds an absolutely stunning courtyard, which I'm so excited to have an outdoor learning space for our students. As you can see here on the top left, this is a picture of what our cafeteria will look like. You can see kind of in the back corner that the left-hand side is a great panel of windows that overlooks our main hallway. In the back part, which you can't see, is another great panel of windows that overlooks our driveway, and in the far back, you can see that we have a great stage that does connect to a dressing room and our music room, which will give our students some great performing opportunities. The top right is the media center that I mentioned that kind of is that dividing factor, probably hands down one of my favorite places in the building. It is a two-story media center with this incredible panel of windows that also overlooks that courtyard that I mentioned, just an incredible space to be the hub of learning for our school. The bottom right is an example of what a typical classroom will look like. As I mentioned, we are greens and blues, so different classrooms will have the blue tone that you see here, and some will have the green tones. And in the bottom left, you see an example of not only our super fun stairwells, but also just an example of some really creative learning spaces that were designed in this building. You can see here we have some built-in stadium seating will allow for also some flexible seating outside this area, and this is just one of the examples of some of this collaborative space that is designed in our building. We also have some collaboration space at the end of our hallways, and what you can't see is on the top floor of the media center, there are four additional collaboration rooms, which is very unique to elementary schools, two of them being with very open concept learning and then two of them more enclosed in for some more privacy. But this will give our students and our staff and our families some great areas to go for some small groups, some reading time, and just other times to collaborate with each other. So I'm just very, very excited about the building. So what have we been doing and what are we going to plan to do to build this new school community? Once we have established our redistricting lines, we will begin to work to engage our community. Once we know who our families are going to be, we are excited to begin to offer some parent meetings, some meet-and-greet sessions, some spirit nights late in the spring, and just other opportunities that will allow our families to come together, not only meet the staff at New Hope Elementary, but also to really get to know each other. Coming from a school with such rich tradition in history and community involvement, I know firsthand how important community and parent involvement is, and I am dedicated to also making those connections here at New Hope. I want our parents at New Hope to walk through the doors the very first day and feel at home. I want our students to feel at home, and I want our families to feel proud to call New Hope Elementary their home. Very excited to get to know them. I've had the opportunity in the past several months and years to really get to know and work with the principals in the Denmark and the Central and the West community, not only of the elementary schools that will work together to form our family at New Hope, but also of the middle and high schools that our students will eventually go to. We are all dedicated to work together to make sure that we support all of our students in our community and not just at our individual schools. As far as partners in education, we've already made some great connections with Brownsbridge Church and Northside Forsyth Hospital. I do have an extensive list of community partners and organizations that we will continue to try to partner with closer to the opening of our school. We really are looking forward to the potential and the possibility to forming these relationships and partnerships so we can work together as a community to support all the needs of our students. And again, once our redistricting lines are finalized, I'm looking forward for the opportunity to go to our feeder elementary schools, meet with our LSC members, meet with their board members, and then eventually even working together to begin the PTO at New Hope Elementary so we can work together to create an amazing opening for our school. So what is our vision for a nighthawk and what is our vision for New Hope? We will certainly use the learner profile to guide our work and guide our goals for our students. Our main priorities are going to be academics, are going to be safety, and really supporting the entire child. We are dedicated to providing academic supports and programs for our students that will allow them to reach their full potential academically, socially, physically, and emotionally. We want them to be leaders. We want them to be nighthawks. We want them to be nurturing and inspiring, genuine, hopeful, trustworthy, helpful, accountable, welcoming, and kind. This list is just the beginning list of traits that we feel will support the learner profile and begin to develop our students into amazing nighthawks. New Hope Elementary brings learning to life. It is a main priority of mine that when students walk through the building, that they have experiences that are exciting, purposeful, meaningful, and engaging. I want our students to wake up every morning and want to come to school. I want our staff to wake up and want to come to work. I want our students and our staff to absolutely love learning, and we are going to work very hard to find this balanced educational approach that will support our students with academic programs, with supports, and extracurricular activities that will help our students reach and identify their strengths, their passions, their talents. And moving forward, what you see here is a list of just some of those programs and supports that will help our students soar into their learning. One of the phenomenal things about our building is it's designed with a built-in STEM lab already and a technology robotics lab, which I couldn't be more excited about. We hope to utilize these labs for our specials. We hope to utilize them for our after-school clubs and activities, and we also want to integrate these labs into the daily teaching of our students with their teachers. I mentioned specials. We certainly plan to have art and music and PE. Absolutely thrilled beyond thrilled that our students in PE will experience an interactive gym, so thank you to our technology department for arranging to have that installed in our new school. Again, I mentioned the media center. We want that to be a hub of research, of learning for our students. We are exploring many different options of personalized learning and positive behavior programs, and we know that we're going to start with a plethora of after-school programs and activities for our students. What we're most excited about is really getting to know our nighthawks. We want to know who they are, know their passions, their interests, and then we'll be able to develop that menu of after-school opportunities for them to explore. Our New Hope Nighthawks will learn, and they will lead, and they will grow together. We know that when we come together as a team, or as a unit, or as a flock, that we will do nothing but excel. We mentioned a lot, I mentioned often, that this building is designed for collaboration, and those spaces are provided. We want our students and our staff to come together, to have the opportunity to create, to innovate, to have these real-world experiences. We want them to have opportunities to grow as leaders. What you see here is just the very beginning of some of those opportunities that we hope to give our students, that will help them grow academically, they will grow artistically, and experience some of those leadership qualities. It ranges from the chorus to Battle of the Books, to the news crew, to Beast Academy, to our Olympiads, school ambassadors, Safety Patrol, and even peer helpers. Again, we want to get to know our families, our students, and their needs so we can continue to develop programs and activities for our students. I hope you can tell just how excited I am about the opportunity to open the school and just how amazing it's going to be. I cannot wait to meet our families. I cannot wait to meet our nighthawks. There is no doubt that when people walk through the doors of New Hope Elementary, they will immediately see just how gorgeous the actual physical building is. But what they don't know yet, but I hope that they will soon, is that it is my goal to ensure that the heart of this school is equally, if not more beautiful, than the physical characteristics. There is no doubt that New Hope Elementary will bring new opportunities and hope to every student, staff member, family member, and community member that walks through its doors. I would like to close by again thanking you for entrusting me with this absolutely incredible building and what I know is going to be a phenomenal new school community. Thank you.
Wow. Jeff, I think you made the right choice for principal for this school. I can't believe how far along in the planning you are already at this in October before it opens, and I'm waiting for cartwheels over there from Tom for the robotics.
I've been watching it every day. You know, it's a great thing to watch and come out of the ground, see the excitement around the school and in the community, and it's going to be home. That's, that's close to home, so I'm looking forward to it.
Can't wait to give you a tour.
I'll be there.
Let me know if you want to bring your hard hat and boots.
I will.
Very excited.
Any other questions or comments?
That was a great overview.
Great job.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
All right, next we have the graphic.
We just heard from Principal Webb, New Hope Elementary is going to be fabulous, and it's pretty clear we have a fabulous leader in Laura. I think everybody wanted to applaud when she got done, so I really don't think that's a problem if we wanted to applaud. That was awesome. So now it's our job as a staff, at least at this point, to submit to you a draft of a newly-districted map that will not only populate New Hope, but also alleviate overcrowding at several of our elementary schools. Want to apologize, I'm going to have to go back through, and I'll do it very quickly, I promise, the PowerPoint that I shared a month ago that shows the overview of this, but they wanted to capture this for video so that we could post this tomorrow with the new district line. So I will do that, and then I'll, then I'll flash up there the, the new map. So let's see here. Okay, so I'll go quickly through this again. Two purposes for our redistricting this, this time around is to relieve overcrowding at existing elementary schools and to populate New Hope, which is scheduled to open next August. These are the elementary schools. If you look at the, at the draft map, these will be the elementary schools that are, that are going to be affected by this. I always kind of leave open that disclaimer that not limited to in case as feedback comes in and as you, as you look at these plans, if, if others are to be affected, then we'll deal with that accordingly, but this is what we anticipate from our, from our work with facilities, the ones that will be impacted. Here's the timelines, or here we are on October 12th, presenting to you the draft map, and we will be putting this video out along with the draft map this week. Hopefully tomorrow we'll have that up, and we will start the collection of data on that for you and feedback. I'll get it to you as we, as it comes in. I know October 18th or next Monday, you have a public forum to, again, in-person, collect feedback from our community. That'll be at Central High School at 6:00 PM, and then when we get to November, based on all those recommendations and any adjustments that we have to make, we'll propose any changes to this original map, and then you'll have that to vote on in November. All right, I'll click onto that in just a second. Just a reminder, I think it's very important to put this out, that in the first year of New Hope, all those schools affected by redistricting at the elementary level, rising 5th graders will be eligible for an out-of-district waiver, and if they opt to stay at their original school, their siblings may stay, but just for one year. In both of those cases, and I can't emphasize this enough, and I'll still get a million phone calls, I'm sure, but if they do choose to do that, they must provide their own transportation. So it's just vitally important that, that we get that message out to, to everybody. So rising 5th graders may stay. If they have a sibling, a little brother, a little sister, they can stay for just one year, and all of them that, that choose in out-of-district must provide their own transportation. And then these are all the ways that we'll be putting the word out. This is, in fact, the newly drafted map, that I think you all have your own copy up there, but that, as you can see, let's get down here. I'm scrolling slowly through this so it captures it on whatever video we need it captured Okay, and so that is, again, at your hands for your review, and this is what we'll be putting out for, for public feedback. Okay, so that's redistricting. No elementaries, or excuse me, no middle schools, no high schools are being proposed for any line changes this year. And I think my next topic, I think I'm next on the agenda for the calendar.
Any questions or comments about what you just had presented to you?
What's the date for the submitting public comment, the last?
The 27th is the, is the final date for that of October. Yep, so they'll have from tomorrow, the 27th.
So we're alleviating overcrowding in several of those schools, and we're putting some students into Beet Creek Elementary because their numbers have been lower than, than they should be?
Yes, yep, yes. We, I focused all on, on that with, obviously with New Hope, but yes, the other school that we talked about last month and that we do have in this draft map, thank you for pointing that out, is to relieve some of the overcrowding at Brandywine and to move some of those to Big Creek Elementary, which has really shrunk in the, in the last several years. Yes, ma'am.
Important that parents put their, people put their input into the survey so that by putting their information in the survey, not only all, all board members will see that information, but all the staff who need to see that to make potential changes. If they put it in the survey, everybody sees the same thing.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
And make it clear, we do look at the comments on there and look at it.
We all, every single one.
Yep. And speaking of public feedback, I'll shift now to the calendar for 2023-2024 school year, which is hard to imagine we're saying that, but we've, we've given the, the local school councils, as has been our tradition, a sneak preview of that, so they've had it and our, and our principals have had it. We submit that to you today, and we'll be, and we've given that to our cabinet today as well, but that'll be released to the public this week, and that's, again, the calendar for 2324 school year. That'll be posted on our website, and that'll remain there until October 27th. And again, we'll be, we'll be taking that feedback in and, and adjusting as, I've already heard some feedback just from the local school councils that merit some good look at that, and I'm sure we'll be tweaking the calendar from the version you see now, but we'll be working on that over the course of the next couple of weeks as well. And the date for final version of that would be November 9th. We would submit the, the final version of that for your consideration. Okay? Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is the tech team analytic dashboard with Mike Evans, Tim Fleming, and Kurt Godwin.
All righty. Thank you all for having us. So I'm here with Kurt Godwin, our Network Operations Coordinator, and Tim Fleming, our Director of Technology Services, and they're really the magic behind this presentation. So what we're going to be sharing with you is our district analytics dashboard that we developed. This dashboard in this presentation is aligned with Board Goal Number Two, alignment of strategies, initiatives, and resources to the FCS learner profile, as well as Goal Three, efficient, effective and efficient financial planning. So we began building out a dashboard about two years ago. We started having that conversation of, how can we take the information that we have and make it real-time and responsive to get the hand, the information to the hands of the staff members that really can have that immediate impact? And we began looking at vendors, third-party applications that offer this as a solution, and what we found was that for an awful lot of money, we could pay for something that does great things, but it doesn't work, we don't have really the abilities to customize it and to make it our own, and as you know, here in Forsyth County, we like to really make things our own. So we headed down the route of developing out our own analytics dashboard. Tim Fleming took this project on and ran with it along with Kurt as a sidekick, and they have developed it into something that is recognizable across the state and the country. It won an IMS Global Learning Impact Award, Bronze Award for an international competition. We had the honor of presenting at the State Board of Education along with Dr. Bearden and had received phenomenal feedback along those lines. And Tim and Kurt have also done dozens of presentations for schools, school districts, other state boards of education that are interested in how we're doing things and what we've done to develop and have this immediate impact along those lines within our classrooms. The current version that Tim's going to share with you really is, it's a stepping point. Where we are right now and where we're going to be in three, five years is going to be dramatically different, and Tim will allude to that as well. But this really couldn't be done without the, the support and the collaboration with our Teaching and Learning Department, our counselors, our principals, and other departments from special ed and student support. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kurt. He's going to jump you through some actual slides. The live information that you're seeing here, it's all obfuscated data, so it, it actually is student data, but it's all confidential, it's all scrambled data so that, that we don't, we have no issues with, with sharing it. But I think what you're going to get, get out of this is really understanding how we can have that immediate feedback on students and change lives in a real time instead of awaiting, which we've had to do previously on monthly or quarterly intervals to really run those reports to see where students are going. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kurt.
Thanks, Mike. Board Dr. Bearden, I appreciate it. I'm going to show you some basic facets of the dashboard. Just to let you know, there's a lot to go over here, so just for the sake of time, we're going to cut this down, but if you want some more information, please feel free to ask. So what you, what you see here is the main school information screen, and you're viewing it from the standpoint of somebody who has district access. So we do role-level security for this, meaning however human resources has an employee classified, that restricts the level of access to what they would see in this dashboard. Principals would see their school and their school only. Counselors would see their students there at the school, and teachers would only see the students that they have in their classes. And so we do all that automatically through the HR staffing program. So what I'm going to show you here is the basic school information screen. Everything that is graphed is clickable and sortable, so we can filter on anything. So if we want to filter on how our ESOL students are doing, I just click that link, and it re-sorts everything, and you see everything that is bold is how that classification scores on this list. And on this display, we're collecting gender, ethnicity, ESOL status, gifted 504, special ed. We're also showing their EOG and EOC assessments, along with our graduation rating, CCRPI, readiness scores, and so on. And so this, as I said, is the school, or the district grouping. I can also drill down if I wanted to look at the different high schools here or down through our different grades, we could do that as well. So as I said, this is the main overview. I'm going to jump down now to our secondary students, no, it was that...
Secondary students in need.
Yeah, secondary students in need. So this is something that our counselors requested. So this is a lot of information that could overwhelm someone if they didn't know what they were looking at. So they asked us to, to gather the information of the students have the lowest GPA, the most absences, the most behavior incidences, the lowest grades, and so we have a, we have this sorted by that. And what's great about this is this is a working document. If we found a student, let's say we click on this one here, and it'll show that, oh, look, they appear in this, most absences. So there's obviously a correlation between their GPA and their absences. And now let's say that we've decided this student, we know that they're hospital homebound, that we know that they have issues that we've addressed, and they don't need to be here. We can exclude this person from this, from that absences, and we can exclude them over here, and it becomes a working document, so it, for me... So it, for me, now that I look at this, I only see those that I need to address. So this is a great tool for our counselors to be able to look at and address those students in need. So now I'm going to go up to secondary academic.
How many, how many coun, what's the number of, I guess, students that a counselor would have, if they're in, on their future, or it varies.
It depends on the level, that's correct.
Some counselors that have, like, hundreds, right?
Oh, yes, they do. They do.
So this is great.
Oh, yes. Right. They're able to drill down. Right. Exactly.
And the data's live, so every night it refreshes at midnight, so you get a brand-new clear slate. So he's about to show you on the grade section, we actually know their grades as of today. So if they turn in a paper and the grade changes, it updates tonight, and now the counselor can tell in real time what's happening.
Correct. So, correct, everything from infinite campus, exactly. And it's important to note that we're ingesting really information from infinite campus at this point, though we also have the ability to pull in its learning and other data sources. Right now, this is just infinite campus. So we can actually do a lot more with this. So this is our secondary academic screen. So this shows the whole collection of our secondary schools, so it whittles it down to over 28,000 students. Graduation prediction level, Tim's going to go into this in a bit, but this is one of the innovations that we came up with for this that is a really nice tool to be able to pinpoint focus on those students who are most in need. But we also capture SAT information where appropriate, both on the writing and math. We have SST information and IST information. And like I said, we can sort this by either a specific student or specific schools.
Let's go ahead and go to graduation predictor.
All right. So I'll let you go ahead.
All right. So I want to show you and take you into the graduation predictor, because this is when it really got cool and fun for us. We got to do some things we had never done before. What we did is we took 10 years of our past students' data, and we began to run it through servers, machines that we could kind of teach the machine and let it learn within itself in an algorithm of what helps students graduate and what hurt them from graduation. So we began to fine-tune the machine till we could get it to where it could predict with our past 10 years of students whether they were going to graduate or not. So it began to predict that. We then taught the machine that it takes a certain amount of credits to graduate, 23 for Forsyth County Schools, but the right credits. So we taught it which credits it took, and then we had it look through all of our current students. We said, and this does this nightly, look through every kid, using what you've already learned through the machine learning, but also knowing what classes they need, and are they passing and failing, and make a prediction on whether they'll graduate or not. And that's what you see here. What the machine was able to do is make a prediction kind of on a scale from one being low confidence all the way to high confidence. And by clicking on any of these, the counselor can sort their students who Ava, which is our academic virtual assistants, that's what we kind of named this project, Ava shows are the ones that are in great need. So if I'm a counselor, and I know I've got 12th grade students, and I've really got to work with my 12th grade students, I can simply sort by grade level, and then I can sort by category. And so now I'm able to go work with the students who Ava says are moderately low confidence, and I can look at all their information. And we give them a little bit of details, but by clicking, you can drill into the student and find out more information. So this really took it out of just who has the lowest grades, the lowest GPA, the lowest, most absences, to fine-tuning it to where a machine helped us make prediction off what it had already seen. We were able to, by doing this, it took a little while to get it perfect, but we were able to predict our past students with about 97% accuracy. The machine could tell whether they were going to graduate or not. And of course, we know what happened to the end of them because they'd already, you know, left us, so we were able to confirm that we were at about 97% accuracy.
And through that, we found that there were certain key predictors that we never would have selected, such as whether or not a student went on field trips, whether or not they had, they exempted certain things. Because we all know GPA is a clear indicator whether or not they're going to graduate, but these other non-traditional things were also key indicators that most people were missing.
I'm going to take you quickly into a PowerPoint slide that we were using for several of our presentations, because I want to show you a little bit more about Ava, because this is where I think I'm going to hope to show you where we want to go. So what we found out during COVID is people didn't have time, counselors didn't have time to go to a dashboard and look through all this data and get it. So we thought of, well, what about if we had Ava look through the dashboard for them and send them an email with all the kids that belong to them? And that's what you see here. Our high school counselors on Friday get a list of every student who is Ava has determined is not going to graduate unless we intervene and help them out. Now, we could teach Ava to do kids who were missing more than 10 days. We could do, teach Ava to do kids who had skipped school, kids who had a lot of discipline referrals. This was just an example of what we were able to do. But what it meant was, people didn't have to go somewhere to get the data, the data came to them. And I think that's where we're going to hopefully grow this. Let me show you one other screen I think that's important. By clicking simply on the name of the student or on the 360 report, it takes you into a screen that looks like this, that the counselors can look at, that shows the student's name. This was a live document, so we blurred it out. It shows you their grade, it shows you the prediction score, it shows their GPA, it shows you whether they're on track or off track. But then by clicking on the name, the counselor's able to do something really cool, and that's this page. From here, the counselor can allow Ava to look at the screen and say, okay, this student needs 23 credits to graduate. Here's the credits they already have, here's the credits they're currently taking, but wait a minute, they're about to fail one, they have a C, and they are failing another one. So Ava can say, hey, and highlight it in red and yellow for the counselor, you need to work with this student on this area or they won't graduate. So it takes a lot of the counselor, instead of him having to dig through files and look at, well, are they failing the class? And what about if they just didn't turn in an assignment, and tomorrow they do? Well, now they're already off the list in one day. The counselor could never keep up with that for a couple hundred kids, but Ava can do it in a matter of seconds. So where do we hope the dashboard goes? We're playing around with this right now. Ava's actually a chatbot. You could go in and ask Ava a question, like, how many kids in third-period Ms. Jones class at Little Mill are failing? And Ava could look through the data and bring your response. We haven't quite got to that level. We have got where it could interact with kids, and it could say things like, would you like to see whether you're on track for graduation? And kid can respond, yes. It could say, if you're off track, would you like to make an appointment with your counselor? And Ava can actually work with the counselor to make the appointment for the kid. So when the kid really didn't know what to do, Ava handles that for you. But that's where we'll really see this growing a lot. Imagine what could happen if we pulled all of our databases into the warehouse that we have just the academic. What about if we poured HR, Munis, the bus information? And then we taught Ava to look through the data, and that you could ask Ava any question. How old are our buses? And Ava could give you a breakdown of how many buses. How many are over 20 years that had to have an engine rehauled? Ava could look through the data and give you that information. How many kids are failing, you know, fourth grade? Ava could look through and give you that information and show you the data, show you the kids. So where we believe that the power really comes to, when we first started, I thought it was building a dashboard. Have something people could go to, and they would be amazed. I found out quickly, the dashboard is nice, but no one has time to go to it. No one has time to click through and sort through the data. So I really believe, after talking with Mike, our boss, teaching and learning, and our counselors, the best thing we can do is make it easy for them to find the information. Whatever question they have, if given enough time, and we're able to pull all the pieces together, you could ask Ava any question that had to do with our data, she could find the answer and give it to you.
And then the step beyond that would be Ava anticipating what you may want and sharing that information with you. It may go through and say, we've noticed that a particular university produces the best special ed teachers. Those are the ones that perform best in your district, we suggest you recruit there. And it comes to you with that information to save you the trouble of having to go ask for it.
I know that sounds a little Star Trek-y, but it's using artificial intelligence. It's the stuff we already have. This, this stuff is not, it's already out there. We've never used it that I know of in a school environment. And when I say school environment, I'm just not talking about our schools, I'm talking about the entire district, because I think there's every application that Ava, the chatbot, can help fit into and make our lives a lot easier. That completes our presentation. Yes. I wanted to see if you had any questions.
Our, our, what was that dashboard, our board dashboard?
Oh, gosh. This is, this is something that our teachers can use, that they don't even, training would be minimal. This is like, they can use it right away, we're giving them something that's not something more for them to do, this is saving them time. This is incredible.
Exactly.
And it helps with their, it helps condense the time that they take.
Saving them time.
They can have more time to focus on the goals.
Working with the students.
Yeah. And more time to teach instead of, you know, the assessment part is, I mean, they're doing that with the testing and stuff. This is showing, okay.
And what's funny is, we have a lot of great teachers and students who are going and doing a lot of this behind the scenes. That's who we met with, and we said, tell me what you're doing. We met a counselor, he had stacks of paper, and he said, well, these are the kids who are failing their classes, and these are the kids who are failing, they need an extra course. And so we just took all that and condensed it and gave it to him on one screen and said, now, every night it'll update for you, so you don't have to do your stacks and look at, are they still accurate? So a lot of this we learned on what they wanted, based on just talking to them and saying, what is it you currently do? Let's do that better for you. Let's make it easier, so you can spend more time with the kids, and less time sorting through papers to figure out.
Exactly. This is not meant to replace people.
Is that how you decided, like, to include field trips and all those kind of things?
Actually, the machine learning discovered that for us. It came through and said, we found these key indicators that, that were weighted in such a way, and it showed us that this contributed so much to a person's likelihood of graduation.
Yeah. When we first started, we didn't tell the machine anything. We just said, find things that help and hurt. That was always, the only instructions we gave, and it began to categorize things. Later, we wanted to teach it what courses they needed, and what are passing grade and failing grade, to help fine-tune it some. But a lot of it was figured out on the front end, which was interesting to us, because if you'd asked me things that helped or hurt a student graduate, field trips would not have been in my top 100.
Yeah. I mean, some of them were obvious, I mean, student absenteeism, obviously, there's a direct correlation, student discipline, is there, there's a direct correlation, but you know, some things popped up that were a little bit.
Yes. Yeah.
Can we solve this?
Well, what, after they present. After they presented to the, to the state board, you know, obviously, we, we are certainly willing to share what we've learned through this experience. They have been at high demand, they've received a lot of questions about, you know, how this, how this works, and, you know, how we put it together, and it's, this has been a multi-year project, putting all this data together. And like, to Tim's point, going back 10 years and making sure that we had that 97% accuracy, you know, we've said all along, we have a graduation rate in our community over 96%. How do we improve upon that? One child at a time. And so how do you improve upon one child at a time? Your counselors and your teachers and your principals need to have that data at their disposal, so they can address those issues sooner rather than later. You don't ever want to get into the second semester of senior year and think, oh, my goodness, how are we going to get this child to the finish line because we may be too late? So the earlier we intervene, the better. And this gives them, like you said, real-time data every single day. That's right.
And I'll tell you, hindsight's 2020, right? So I remember teaching and learning coming to us years ago, and they brought a binder with four different sections in it, had the data that we're looking at, but it didn't interconnect. And I asked Lisa after the presentation, I said, what if I want to know this and this? And she said, oh, it's coming. Well, it's here. That's pretty cool.
I'm not sure if I mentioned it earlier, but we're also working with Tim Keager on getting the public-facing dashboard, that our board dashboard and slide that you had talked about, back on our website, so that we can have that public-facing information and insight into the district, too.
Yeah, that was, that's not on there anymore.
No, no, that was, that was removed a couple of years ago, but, but we're working now to get that back on there, so we can have that transparency as well.
This is so much more than I thought it was going to be when you did the presentation to the state board of ed. This is so much more user-friendly. It's not, it's got so much in it, but it's not complicated.
Well, you know, credit to our leadership in technology, you know, they've listened to principals and teachers about, you know, what information do you need that will help you in terms of making sure our kids have the resources and support they need to be successful? And they said, we need accurate, real-time data that we don't have to dig to find, that it's at our fingertips, and these guys made it happen, and it's absolutely incredible. Super proud.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Any questions, anyone?
And no, we were watching.
Oh, there you go. Perfect.
State Board of Education meeting, so we were there.
That's perfect. That's good. All right. Thank you all very much.
Congratulations. That's awesome. Thank you so much. Next up, we have facilities update with Matt Work. It's a little bit of a hard act, but.
Oh, yeah. No problem. And if I had to bring my four guys up, they said they'd drag me outside and kill me if they had to come up and do that. My presentation, Sandy, do I see it on here?
On the left.
On the right?
Right.
There it is. All right. I am excited to be here as well to talk to you, kind of in correlation with the upcoming sploß that's coming in. It's a great time to go ahead and give a facilities update, because we do take on majority of that sploß in addition to transportation, technology, things of that nature. So it's good to know what we've done in the last five years, what we've done recently, as well as what do we do on a daily basis to maintain our current schools and go from there. The good news is, and I don't know if Dr. Bearden is the one that did this, but we're also going through our five-year facilities plan at the same time. So we have strategic planning going on, we have a sploso going on, we have all kinds of things, accreditation, and we have also our five-year facilities plan. So it's a lot going into one year, but it is nice, it's that everyone's involved in the, in the district to move our district forward for the next five years. So it's great planning, by the way, because every year, something like that takes a lot of time and effort. So with that, I'll move right into my presentation. We have 43 school facilities, which 17 of them are now 20 years or older, which is very important. As I go through this, I brought some individuals with me today that don't get a lot of recognition, and I wanted to take that time. I'll reference them quite a bit, because you see me a lot in these meetings every month. You see Tom Winning, you see Greg Pruitt, but the four individuals that are here are the leads of maintenance that keep things moving. This is, this is our lifeline every day. I panicked last month when the lights went out, they wouldn't have. So thank you very much. And I'll introduce them soon, but these guys are extremely excited about the next five years, because it is that type of a refresh. So that's why I wanted to bring them here again today. With those, our 43 school sites, we are at 7.5 million square feet. That is just buildings. And yes, we have beautiful, beautiful facilities, we're extremely proud of those, but what goes on the wayside that people don't understand, we also take care of nearly 2,000 acres, 1,967 to be exact. And what people miss on that, well, you're taking care of the buildings. We take care of ponds, landscaping, water, sewer, irrigation, fencing, parking lots, paving. These guys take care of all of that. So, so many times, people just say, oh, it's a beautiful building. Look at our entire site. We take huge pride in that, with leaks and things of that nature everywhere, these guys are the ones that see that on a daily basis. So please, we don't want to lose sight of just square footage. The other thing is, we have seven support facilities of over 300,000 square feet. And with New Hope, it will put us over the 8 million square feet mark, which is phenomenal. It's a great thing, but it is a tremendous amount of work. And that's moving into the next slide, or the next bullet point that I have. If we have, in our total crew, we have 51 staff members. That includes myself, nine facilities team, which is Tom Winning and Casey Rose, who manage our construction side, Greg Pruitt and Jan Selz manage the planning side of it, and you're going to see there's a lot more to it. We have one individual that oversees all of our head custodians and custodial department, that's Kitty Slaton, who's been with our district for over 20-some years, probably closer to 30. Brian Carlisle, that does all of our GIS mapping and zoning. But what a lot of people don't know, that Brian also takes care of all the HVAC scheduling for every single school. So that is managed from the central office. That is a lot of time and effort for weekends and holidays and moving those temperatures, and we're done by zone. So you physically have to go in and touch each and every one of those. And then we have one bookkeeper on each side, one for facilities and one on maintenance. And again, I talked real quick about this, but a lot of people don't know who these people are. The individuals with me, I have, I'll start at the bottom real quick. We have running our entire maintenance department, we have one person that does all the dispatching and invoicing. That's a lot of work. Amanda Odom, she has been here again well over 20 years, she's an excellent person, been here. We just hired a new person. One other individual does all of our parts and inventory. For everything we do in a district-wide, those two people do that. But more importantly, I want to introduce the four people that are here today with me. First is Wayne Caston, he's our lead electrician. He has been here for 21 years. So Wayne is here with us. Secondly, plumbing, Kevin Songer, he has been here with us for 20 years, and Kevin is a happy graduate of Central High School, so that's, again. Third is Lee Rowe, who is our lead carpenter, pretty much jack of all trades, you've probably seen Lee fix something around here. He's been with the school district for 21 years. And then we have Steve Mooney, who oversees HVAC, so whenever you're cold or hot or whatever, he's the one that runs all that. So Steve's here, he's been in the school district 23 years, and Steve Mooney is also a graduate of Central High School. So again, what I want to tell you about these individuals is they are vested. I've been in five different school districts and I've never seen a team like this. I see people, I call these four guys in the middle of the night, we've washed graffiti together, we have, you know, Steve Mooney has cleaned up coolers that have shut down in the middle of the night, these guys are on call 24/7. We oversee, as you can see, we average almost between 1,100 and 1,500 work orders a month. So look at the numbers that we do, we average just, you know, around 10 individuals per department. That includes these guys going out and doing maintenance jobs and filling tickets as well. So again, that's a lot, and I hold them to an extremely high standard. We must either fix or put a note and an update to a school within 48 hours of every work order. Because it's not right for people to go with something broken and not know what's going on. These guys take pride in that and we hold a very high standard. Moving on. We're excited to talk about what we've completed in the last five years. This is a $305 million SPOS program, and we're excited to move into another five years. It's going to look totally different, but just as an overview, we've completed over 90 projects, and I'm very, very proud, and this is a testament to Bill McKnight, who retired. We have completed 87 of the 90 projects, and we have three remaining, and we will finish them by the end of next summer. So right on track to move on into the next SPOS. I will tell you, though, that's going to be a little bit more challenging in the next five because we are doing the pay-as-you-go model, which is exciting, you know, but when you have to wait for that income, we can't just jump as much right away and quickly. So again, 90 projects, we're extremely proud to have three left over to procure and complete. What a lot of people don't know, though, on top of that bond, we have also done all the security vestibules, that was the security initiative, but we managed that. So all of our department and these four guys, again, have jumped in and we managed all those. So that's another 43 projects that we had to design through the planning department, construction to complete, and now we maintain. So we all work together in a constant flow. The other thing is too, is the CTAE projects. All Valerie's projects that are put in there, we designed those, we procure those for her, and we also manage through Tom and Casey, also manage those projects all the way through completion because that's the expertise that they have. Why not go in there and we want to make sure Valerie gets what she needs as well? But also, again, I'm going to beat this horse till it's done, then these guys have to maintain it for the life. Okay? So again, every time we hear these projects, these guys are the ones that end up having to maintain it. Okay? Moving on. Beautiful, new construction that we got to do over the last five years. Ace and Focal, I mean, as you can see, they're state-of-the-art facilities, they're unbelievable. We're getting great feedback from that. Alliance, Academy of Innovation, that again speaks for itself. The Parking Deck, East Versailles, Hendrix, New Hope, which is under construction, Laura did an outstanding job of promoting that non-prototype. It's going to be exciting when it opens, I think it's going to be a staple for our community. But also Pools Mill Elementary. But again, that's just eight projects. Think about, think about that entire bond list and we'll be able to complete it. So we're very, very excited about what we've accomplished. There's two more slides I wanted to talk to you about because I think this also gets forgotten. When I was first hired, I was charged to say, hey, we need to do some things to our schools to give them that facelift, to kind of move them forward, our existing schools. So they're building improvements. And I thought about how to do this, and my, being an ex-principal, assistant principal and a teacher, I always said, I wish they would just listen. People would always ask, well, they don't know what we go through on a daily basis. We hear that all the time. So when I was hired, I didn't want to lose that. So what I did is, when I was charged with, by Dr. Burden, say, hey, we really want to make these building improvements, I went to the principals. And the principals are the ones that created this document, and I believe you have that and you can see that. This was over 200 projects that the principals felt this is what they wanted. We didn't influence it, we didn't change it, we said, what makes, you know, what is your priority? Because my priority, I could paint and do flooring everywhere. But that may not be their big priority. So we focused on them, and I'm excited to say, we've completed 176 of them already. And we have already set, Lee Rowe is moving a lot of these together, because we didn't want to waste money in going out and getting general contractors for all this. So guess who really did 99% of these? These four individuals behind me. So again, that saves the district money, but what it does, it puts more strain on them because they're still trying to get those work orders done, but they know, hey, we can do this in-house, let's try to do that. They manage those projects. So again, they continuously help, and we're excited to have those also done. So you guys do have that list and you can also see when that'll be done. And some you will see, I coded everything green, it's been done, finished and paid. Yellow means we're in procurement and getting ready or it's already in work. There are some things in red that we just had to say no, certain things we just couldn't accommodate. You know, you can't put something in the ground right there, or you, you know, we can't give that to a certain school. I'll be happy to address that if you guys have any additional questions. My last slide is something that really no one knows a lot about. This was implemented, Tim Amerson and Bill McKnight implemented this many, many years ago, that we give great autonomy to our schools, and we want them to have that. However, there's things we have to make sure, if they're going to change a, any part of their facility, we ask that they do a school-initiated project packet. Because there's a lot of times, schools have great ideas, and we want to give them that autonomy, but they go and put something, a play structure over a sewer manhole, and all of a sudden, we have a disaster. So what we say to the school, it's a very simple packet, that they tell us what they want, they submit that packet, that comes to Greg and Jan in our planning department. They do all the research. You know, it comes down to, I want to paint an office. Sure, you can paint that office, but here's what you have to, what type of paint to use. So we do all those checks and balances. Again, that goes through my department to make sure, that's a lot of legwork. If it's a larger project, it goes through Tom and Casey to work through and procure, but 99% of the time, it always falls on the four individuals behind me. Because, yes, they may do it, but guess who has to maintain it forever? Okay? So again, and this is kind of the sticky point that we're getting at. Sometimes we're getting to the point where we're just going to have to say no, sometimes the school-initiated projects. Because right now, I'll use Steve Mooney as an example, he has almost 7,000 pieces of HVAC equipment. And we just, you know, when a school comes to us and says, we want to add HVAC here, we want to add this here, and we'll pay for it. I love that, that is such a great idea, but he'll choke me. Okay? Because we just can't, sometimes we just have to say, we can't do that right now. Just because we just can't keep up with so much of the maintenance. You've got to remember, yes, the funding is done, but we have to maintain it. Just like painting hallways, things of that nature. So again, these things go all the way through our department, as you can see, and this is really when, and I've been really hard on schools, that sometimes there's been one or two projects that they've done and it's ruined something, we make them take it out because they didn't go through this process. Okay? But you can see how many more projects this is adding to our department every single month. And it's great, our schools have the funding sources, they have the resources, we want to encourage that, but it is more that comes to us. You can see some of the examples, lettering on buildings, sunshades, playground equipment, artificial turf, wind screening, a dog park fence at Lambert, which was fantastic, we loved to do it, it was a great idea for their special needs. Bleachers, painting, floorings. So it's just important to know that that all falls with us as well, because not a lot of people know how these things appear. So with that, in conclusion, we're very excited about moving into another five years. These four guys are extremely excited, as I mentioned before, because, yes, the new buildings are beautiful, they're amazing to our community, but it's also critically important that we keep up the 40 schools that we have, the 43 schools that we have, make sure even the Midways and the Mashburns and the old schools that we have are also state-of-the-art facilities. So we're excited about the next five years, hopefully this SPOS is approved and we can continue that great work. And I'll end with just saying, again, I'm extremely proud of the team I have. And if you see anyone, three of them are wearing their uniforms, they're the only, us in the transportation department, the only ones that have official uniforms, because I think it's important. If you ever see an individual in these uniforms, please stop and say thank you. Our, our maintenance men really work hard and they do a great job.
Thank you. Well, a couple of things, I know Jeff, you probably want to say things. I'm glad you pointed out some of the work that your department does. I always assumed when we had bond projects or SPOS, that was something that we always contracted out. And I didn't realize, for example, the safety vestibule improvements and the CTAE projects, I didn't really realize that that was all done internally. So that's in addition to your normal workload. So that was, I'm really glad you pointed that out. And I know that when you worked with all the principals and went out to them and said, okay, what, what day-to-day things do you need fixed? What is on your list that you want to have fixed? And I know, going to LSC meetings and listening to the principals, they were so happy to have you go to them and ask them, what do you need to be a fix? It's those things that make their day-to-day lives better, improvements, whether it was something in their engineering department or whatever they had needed to be fixed, they are so happy about that. And it not only makes their life better, it makes improvement of instruction better, but it also helps the morale in the school. So that was a win-win in many different areas, so thank you for that. And, and I just wanted to clarify, in your last slide, you talked about all these different school-initiated projects, which I know are an extra workload for you, but most of these projects, and I know, for example, the service dog park, these are generally, the funds that come in from these, from the schools are often from fundraisers or partners.
Fundraisers, PTA, PTOs, absolutely.
They're not necessarily taxpayer dollars, they're just, where the school raises the funds and they come to you and say, hey, we've got the money to do this from external funds, and then the process goes.
Yes, and a lot of it is, you know, for like the baseball turf, that's done by a booster. PTA or PTOs do amazing work in our schools. So a lot of the playground equipment and things of that nature, that gets done by PTOs, but then we have to inspect them because every piece is put in, every year must have an inspection, so that's part of what we have to take care of. But yes, that's the kind of funding sources that are used on these.
And that's a good example, like, I know, Big Creek Elementary, they just were putting in.
Correct.
Their playground, but then once it's there, we have to make sure there's mulch there every year to make sure it's safe, because it's not, it's not thick enough, somebody could get hurt, so that's.
And that takes, and that's something I have to budget for every year as well, as well, and plus, I have to pay for the inspections every single year as well.
All right, well, this is a really good overview.
It was. Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, we, as mentioned earlier, our 96% graduation rate and we have very high student achievement, and if you were to ask, you know, what are some of the main reasons why, you know, our schools are so very well-maintained? Our, our students and our teachers learn and teach in a very safe learning environment that's conducive to teaching and learning. And if you had a school system where things were not being well-maintained, I'm telling you, the PR behind that for the six of us would be, I mean, we'd hear about it constantly. And we rarely hear any issues with any of our schools because the leadership here makes sure that kids have what they need, teachers have what they need to learn every single day. And I'm so glad that the four of you were able to be here this afternoon so we could thank you for your service and your leadership. You know, the four of you do a great job, and I just hope you know how much you appreciate it and respect it.